Okay. The four oh. Okay, number two is deliberate and consider action on the following items. Uh, and number one is we're gonna have a report from the long Jasper Newton Long Term Recovery Group regarding the work for after the Hurricane Laura. And, uh, we're gonna have Ms. Kathy Pearson.
But I'd like to say thank y'all for allowing us with that same long-term recovery program and work with county again. Uh, most of our work happened in Newton County. And, uh, let's see, another two is if there's one few and some less that we're working on, uh, with that group, uh, being not to back in this year, uh, especially, uh, group of your office. Again, I want to say thank you, thank you for coming Kathy to help me since I, I love my part of the law, but I come into all this and that. But Kathy will step up and help. So, this office, Newton County people can come through and they don't have to go all the way to real to sign up. And that is really just the people themselves and they'll sign up. Again, uh, they're still working. They'll be here, uh, probably for the first three months in January, February, March, or next year. Uh, coming in every week and through. So if y'all know someone that hasn't signed up, please send them to me or Kathy and that we can get them signed up. Because once they're gone, they're gone. And so they can work with the city, they can come in. That has been our number when we have all two. So this is a report that I've given you of the, uh, number of applications we've received for assistance. And you can see that that's a total of a hundred and seventy-five. Eighty-four of those were for chainsaw help or the debris removal. And ninety-one were for some type of home repair. You can see that we've completed a hundred and forty-three of those. Eighty-four, all the chainsaw and debris removal ones are done. Fifty-nine of the homes have been repaired. And we still have remaining thirty-two that we'll be working on over the next few months. Um, the volunteers, you can see, these are simply the ones we ourselves have managed. I know there are other volunteer groups that are showing their donations given to the county, but these are the ones that we do help with. When the hurricane hits, um, and volunteer, people wanting to volunteer, starting, the requests started coming to the county and people needing help, they rallied those through my office. And that's when I reached out to Billy. And I appreciate that, Mrs. Compton. So the volunteer groups that we've managed, there are twelve of those. Uh, that's been two-hundred-and-nine total volunteers through those groups. Uh, that was nine thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-four hours. And we multiply that to the value of volunteer hour, that's two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand twenty-one dollars. And that is just as of November thirtieth. That doesn't include what's gonna go on this week and in the months to come. Our donations have been coming from public disaster recovery. And they so far funded sixteen thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars in thirty-six cents towards the repair of the homes. And as you see the little graph there, ninety percent, we figure about ninety percent of the income and all the work was Newton County. And ten percent was in Jasper County. Since it is the Jasper Newton Long Term Recovery Group, it includes both counties, but ninety percent of that's been in Newton County. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but, uh, I know, I do know that the citizens in Newton County really, really appreciate y'all, uh, for all the work y'all have done and the coordination that y'all put in place for the chainsaw crews and repair crews and all that stuff. And I know y'all took a tremendous load off of me. And I appreciate you stepping up, Ms. Kathy, when I appointed you for that position. And, uh, and I know Miss Billy also appreciates that also. So, uh, I think y'all doing a tremendous job.
Thank you.
Did, uh, did y'all capture the hours that was made at duty of the area, uh, presently? Uh, Jana, Jana has a count on.
No, because we gotta have anyone from Newton, y'all, to reach out to us for any day. So we don't have anything.
We, we did. I, I don't know whether you would wanna capture those or not.
We would. That would, that would be helpful to our group to show what.
Yeah, 'cause we, we had a lot of volunteers. And she did, and she has those hours.
Yeah, she's got them, but that would be better if she's been to.
Just give her a call.
Okay.
Jana Williams, you know her? No. Is my sex check?
Okay. All right. Kathy, y'all. Okay.
We thank y'all. So second item is accept and approve the canvas of the November the third, twenty-twenty general election. And, uh, that's gonna be reported by Ms. K.K.
Okay. Everybody, I'm saying that this is a free nominee somewhere.
No, no, that would be a nominee. We're looking at one of them.
The total or? The early vote is extremely high for this election. Uh, we had a total of four thousand nine-hundred and ninety-nine that registered voters that voted early. And election day, we had two thousand four hundred and thirty. And brought us up to have a total of nine thousand four hundred and forty registered votes through the office in our county. And we voted sixty-five percent. That is the most we have voted that are in. If y'all would like to break down the votes, I do have an agent who can let me know and can give it to you.
On the, on the early voting and the grand total, you've got, uh, nine thousand four hundred and three. And then in the, uh, voter day, you got, uh, nine thousand four hundred and four. There's one difference. Is that a typo?
Yes. I just saw that, unfortunately. Yes, we'll get that changed.
Okay.
And I would like to say, you know, just because a lot of stuff going around during the elections of different problems and issues and lots of questions. Questions, we did a lot of overage conditions. And most, most people were those that listened to it. And, uh, we did not have any issues with ballots or voters or any of the concerns about voting decisions in, you know, regular or something like that. But we had no problems that we accused. It actually just went, went in.
Okay, here are motions to approve the canvas.
I make that motion and we approve the canvas, uh, for the November third general election.
Motion been made by Mr. Wyatt and second by Mr. Thompson that we approve the canvas for November the third elec- of general election, twenty-twenty. Uh, is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh.
I'm here, Judge.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Gary Formby is, is on virtual and he'll be participating, uh, by voice that way.
You're not corn-dained again, is it? He's not corn-dained again, is it?
Uh, I wouldn't say. Uh, discussing and consider award for the contract, uh, construction contract for Economic Development Administration, the EDA project, uh, number oh-eight dash seven-nine dash oh-five three oh-seven for the county road forty-one twenty-three. And, uh, Mr. Pat Oakes.
Just to kind of remind everybody, we, uh, we took bids on the EDA project. And there were five different bidders. There was a base bid, which was the general construction, reconstruction of the seventy-three-hundred feet of county road. Also called San Pib Road, started State Highway twelve and heading north. In order that the road be reconstructed, upgraded, which in turn, uh, served the local economy down there, relative to some businesses. Uh, we also had an alternate bid, since the road will have to be closed temporarily, uh, especially in the southerly direction, to put some safety features on one of the drainage crossings. Most of the traffic, the route, which has to do with putting steel plate temporarily over an existing cover structure, so we don't have any collapsing issues. Uh, and there was an alternate bid, two, which was put in, say, the relation fabric, uh, which would give us, it would, it would add some stability to, as an underlayment for the road base, this proposal. Uh, after receiving an approval to proceed with an award from DECOG, we'll recommend the award to the LEAK contractors in Kirbyville. And that's for the base bid and both of the alternatives, uh, in the amount of one million six thirty-four eight ninety-nine sixty. Uh, the budget pay is approximately a hundred and ninety thousand dollars left that the county can use on that road, uh, should y'all decide to do so. Uh, one of our concerns that we checked with the LEAK had to do with the amount of equipment they have, you know, on hand. And they gave us, in my opinion, a satisfactory response as far as the type of equipment that they either have or that they're going to be renting to the project. Uh, they'll give us a makeup of manpower that's gonna be out there and, uh, a schedule for working the project through completion. I would have to answer any questions you may have.
What was the completion date on it? If they are awarded the contract?
Well, we'll do, we'll do awards. Uh, if we award today, then the completion date will be set with a notice of proceed. Uh, I believe we've got a hundred and, uh, we have a hundred and twenty days of the project completed. What I anticipate happening is us trying to get a reconstruction conference either by the end of the year or right after the first. If we can do it within the next week or so, that's my box of it. Just have all that down, a notice of proceed issued before the year's lost.
Are they going a hundred and, a hundred and twenty days?
Hundred and twenty days.
Weather's built into that?
Sure.
The weather conditions are built into that hundred and twenty days?
Yes, because that project could be done in about ninety days.
Okay.
So given our location, uh, the general makeup of the road and things like that, it's felt like we would probably have been about a hundred and twenty days.
So this, this is not calendar days, this is working days, right?
It's consecutive calendar days.
Consecutive calendar days.
It's not just five days a week, it's seven days a week. As far as how we count the time.
So, so weather conditions don't affect it?
The, the weather conditions would be, well, they, well, they can, Judge, it depends on, uh, uh, the way that this contract's been written. It's a function of if there's an active guide such as inclement weather, uh, soil conditions, too wet to work, things like that, that they can request, uh, as, as it proceeds. But we do have a pretty sandy side. So I think a lot of this work they're gonna be able to do, uh, because it's not, uh, I mean, the site does grind, uh, generally, right now.
Okay, just for the audience that's here, uh, explain a little bit about this grant, so they won't be teetotal in the dark that, uh, how much it was and how we was actually graining that.
Yes, sir. Uh, the project is, uh, it's through Economic Development Administration, which is a federal agency, but it's administered out of Austin, also called EDA. And periodically, EDA will come in at someone's request, in this case, the county, to try and improve, uh, the possibility for a level commerce in an area. That area has a large business there. It's, it's a specialty sand, uh, establishment. They provide, uh, sand material, uh, for people actually all over. But that particular road, you can, you can apply for those funds. And the county has DECOG to help them with that. And, uh, DECOG actually has been a grant and done all the work with EDA. Uh, but as it works, the funding on this project is over two million dollars. Uh, the funding pays for environmental engineering, construction, and administration. It was one point eight two million budget is for construction. The, the, the lowest bid on this is approximately one point six two. So we've got around one ninety, two hundred thousand remaining that the county can spend funds, uh, on this project. Uh, one thing we would like to be able to do, and talking to the commissioner, uh, is to go further with the road, a little further to the north. Right now, it's planned to start at Highway twelve, right there in Bootyville. And you go up, uh, about seventy-three hundred feet right now, which actually gets you just past, uh, all of the driveways that are currently active on that road. For those of you who have been on the road or are aware of it, the road is currently, uh, kind of a mixture of gravel material. It's very sandy, if you might imagine. Uh, the proposed road is gonna have a twenty-four foot wide subgrade, uh, driving base. The idea is to go in there and regrade the road. Uh, there's gonna be some areas where we're gonna elevate the road over what it currently is. We're gonna do a cement stabilization at the subgrade in order to firm up the sand. And then put a fabric down, uh, beneath that, more stabilization. We're gonna put in ten inches of crushed limestone base and then two inches of hot mix surface. And all of that after we've replaced covers and also added more covers so that they'll carry more water during flooded conditions.
You're saying that the road is gonna be twenty-four feet wide?
Yes.
Wide's wide.
Well, the basis, the surface is gonna be twenty feet.
Okay.
Uh, if you've ever been on that road, uh, and, and kinda see, they've got an awful lot of truck traffic on that road. Uh, one thing we did change was up in the area of the main driveway on In-N-Out, is we put a concrete turning area. That's the one segment of the road that's booked with concrete. Just because, you know, it'll push out if you don't put something a little more rigid there over time.
And a turning, a turning area for those big trucks is gonna be concrete.
Yes, that's true. It was a driveway turnout going back into the property with some bri- limestone brackets at the transition.
And to add one thing to the audience, this grant is a hundred percent, which is beautiful about it. And I don't know, is this a reimbursement?
Uh, I don't think so. Once we get started, I, I, Chad is involved in Carolyn and we actually get the approved bill given off.
Be a quick turn.
Once you get that first one in there.
And it does go past the collection station, right?
Yes, it does. Yes, sir.
Is that approximately halfway to the north? How, I mean, approximately?
It's actually a little more than halfway. Uh, towards Highway eight, so for those of you. If you, when, when you go out there from, from the end of the project where we currently have at seventy-three hundred feet, you go through an area, I mean, that, that area is low on most parts of the road, pretty much a total length. But you do have some areas where that slough that you go through, uh, is gonna grind across. And that's what we're talking about, putting these temporary plates. Cause there's a, looks like an NRCS, one of those NRCS structures that have, that would have walls and railing and all that. But we're, we're a little concerned about having that much traffic on it. So we thought like if it puts, you seen the, the steel plates they put down, kind of act like a temporary bridge. But yes, it gets you a little more than half of us.
Okay. I hear a motion.
I make the motion that we, uh, consider the award for the, of the, uh, construction contract for, uh, Economic Development for County Road forty-one twenty-three. Go ahead.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Wyatt and, uh, second by Mr. Fuller, that we, uh, award a contract on the construction of the EDA grant, uh, project oh-eight seven-nine oh-three, no, oh-five three oh-seven, uh, to LEAK, uh, with the two alternates added to it, right? And, uh, so is any more discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Five oh.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
And number four is discuss and approve appointment, appointee for, uh, County Historical Commission to serve two-year term beginning in January one twenty twenty-one. Mr. Jefferson?
I think y'all all have a list that's submitted to y'all. I just believe you have it for us. And I'm just, uh, stopping, I'm like, like, Texas, the state commission. It's us for three years, like, it was a team. Questions? I have a conference to do.
I don't.
It's, it's on your, oh, you don't have your computer.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, pass yours out, John.
Take one, pass her down.
Pretty much same ones, John?
Yes.
I hear a motion to approve the appointees.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller and second by Mr. Thompson, that we approve the appointees for his County Historical Commission to serve a two-year term starting January first, twenty-twenty-one. Any more discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Number five, discuss and if appropriate, extend COVID nineteen disaster declaration until January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. And this will be just extending it from month to month until we see fifth and odd two. And, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and include, uh, number six, the Hurricane Laurel disaster declaration to January the eleventh, twenty twenty-one. And also, we're gonna extend the Hurricane Delta, uh, disaster declaration to January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. So that'd be item, uh, five, six, and seven. If y'all decide to strike one, just tell me which one you want to strike or all.
I make the motion to be extended declarations on COVID nineteen, Hurricane Laurel disaster and Hurricane Delta disaster.
A second. Motion been made by Mr. Fuller and second by Mr. White, that we extend these, uh, the COVID nineteen, the Hurricane Laurel, and Hurricane Delta, uh, decoration until January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Any more discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Uh, number eight is to approve the donation of three thousand four- Uh, number eight is to approve the donation of three thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-six cents from the TC, uh, Cemetery to Precinct One.
This is for some material, uh, that I haul for the cemetery, this work I did there at cemetery. At trap three.
May I hear a motion to approve?
A motion. I second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and approved, uh, second by Mr. Thompson, that we accept the donation of three thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-six cents from the TC, uh, Cemetery to Precinct One. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Five-o. Number nine, discuss and approve the term, uh, termination of the contract with Micro Integration. And, uh, Ms. Courtney?
Micro Integration is the one, uh, it's a company that's part of a lot of our network team and offered previously. And we've, uh, contracted with.
CPA.
CPA, CPA, the CPA, the office, and we wanted to get to follow up on that before we terminated the integration and all that party and talk to our team. And everybody's supposed to be with somebody in the contract and cooperation. Which could have all sent a letter today and all their names of our formation.
Okay, hear a motion?
I'll leave it. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. Fuller, that we approve the termination of the contract with, with, uh, Micro Integration. Uh, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Five-o. Number ten is to discuss and approve the maintenance agreement between Harris Governor and the Texas, uh, so, uh, Sessors and Collector Office with the purpose of maintaining the tax collection server and software. And, uh, Ms. Melissa Burge, she's gonna weigh in on that and, and Mr. Shannon may join also. Okay, Mr. Melissa?
Yes, sir, Judge and Court. Okay, I spoke with Ryan this morning on the IT server support agreement. This is what it covers. They would install software and make sure that it works or is compatible with hair, with packs as needed. Uh, it would include unlimited VPNs, virtual private network connections, uh, monthly security patching, two onsite visits per year to assess the server. Also includes installation of a new server, which that is between four and five thousand dollars. And that's for any reason, whether it crashes, uh, hurricane, ransomware, any type of recovery, for any reason, it's covered. So that, uh, like I said, that's between four and five thousand dollars. That's what he, uh, we talked about this morning. Uh, he couldn't see whether this on call for, there was a conflict. But y'all have any questions?
So is, is the total amount between four and five thousand, or is that one server, uh, four or five thousand?
It's four to five thousand dollars just to install it. The server is, uh, quite a bit more. But this is ins- an installation, includes the installation of a new server at no charge for any reason. And installing a new server is between four and five thousand dollars.
They're not gonna charge us install, is that correct?
They want in, they won't charge for any reason. Server support agreement covers that. So there would be no addition, there would be no charge for installation. And.
Is this something you got in your budget, or is this coming out of the general fund or, or what?
This has come up after my budget, so I did not plan on it. This is not something I planned on.
Four thousand a year.
Now, uh, sure, I can find it.
I wanna say we, when we did the budget for the line of our Harris Government deal, um, our initial fee with our software, we usually put a little bit extra in there to cover any ups or downs, but we might be in there, we didn't put enough.
Uh, it doesn't appear to be that much, but I'm. Uh, I will do my best to find it. I have, that's not something.
You said this is gonna be an annual, yeah, five thousand?
Four thousand.
Four thousand?
Yes, sir.
And what, what do we pay for it now, do you know?
Um, so there, you're not paying for anything for their IT services at this time? Um, any support for the server or anything like that? Um, and you, in a way, you find like insurance for it because all of that important data for their whole tax base over there is subject to a crash at any moment. They have very expensive software, from my understanding, upon them, that will allow them to manage, look for errors in the data, just everything that would, it would cost us an arm and a leg just to try to manage. Um, whereas they purchase, you know, they, they have the software and they do it for all their time. So they're helping themselves at a much lower rate because they can't listen to them on their people. Um, it, it's a huge benefit after helping them, um, for that amount of money and the services that they're gonna provide.
And so they're gonna, they're gonna install it for free?
Yes.
Which is a four or five thousand dollar charge?
And that's only if, you know, a new server and, and you probably gonna need to update that server every few years. Um, but it could be as much as a hard drive failure. That's gonna be included in all this, uh, just replacing one hard drive.
Didn't we not discuss that at work just back about upgrading our security?
Privacy. Yes. Probably a lot of expenses to add in on the maintenance agreement. You already had a remit out, um, which is our other server here. It was gonna be, or should have been included in her base price. But they were trying to reduce the amount and Harris Government allowed them to remove that, to lower their cost. But it should have been included all along.
So, so this is something you, you would agree with, Ashan? Uh, and, and you, you have a good working relationship with these people?
Yes, sir.
Not like we've had with other, experienced with other?
They're very helpful, you know, call them pretty often.
That's, uh, that's one of the things that, uh, Ryan and, uh, Roger said that they really, uh, had a good relationship with Shannon and enjoyed working with him. And there is a one-time one-hundred-and-eighty-five-dollar setup fee. And it will be billed quarterly as our other, uh, agreement is a thousand seventy-seven dollars.
Okay. All right. You have any more questions?
Monday's not there, we gotta come back and do a budget.
They had, Jerry, I was just talking to him. We think overall will probably be there, but what I know is we may have to talk it over.
Does this, uh, main, main, maintenance agreement go from, uh, on a yearly basis or what?
It is yearly, I believe.
It's yearly, but it's billed quarterly?
They already paid twenty thousand a year for licenses. That's yearly, and that's where I was saying, supposedly it was supposed to be included in the, the yearly license agreement, that they maintain those orders as well. There are a lot of distractions, it's just. And, uh, so it was supposed to be twenty-five thousand a year, but they reduced that amount by taking that out.
So will this agreement run concurrent with what we've already got, or?
It will. It will. It will.
Okay, is there gonna be any extra expense because, uh, the agreement we've already got with them has been in effect, how long, five months, six months? Or is it going to affect, uh, twenty-twenty-one or what?
They said they would prorate it and bill it quarterly, just, they bill quarterly, so they would prorate it.
Okay. Okay, that, that answered my question. All right.
That upgrade is on the security part.
You wanna make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion we approve the, uh, maintenance agreement between Harris Governor and Taxress Sess and Collector Office, uh, for the purpose of maintaining the tax collector server and software.
A second.
Motion been made and seconded on item number ten, uh, is any more discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Five-o. Uh, number eleven?
Thank you, Judge, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Discussing if appropriate, approve the regional neutral aid agreement between, uh, Deb Cog and, and, uh, the county. So, uh, I got Ms. Leah's down here, but what they say is it's just a renewal from year to year, uh, that we have the neutral aid agreement with, uh, Deb Cog. And I just need that approved starting, uh, twenty-twenty-one.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller and second by Mr. Thompson, that we, uh, approve the regional neutral aid agreement with, uh, Deb Cog. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Five-o. Number twelve, discuss and consider approving the recommendation for the selection review committee to award the resolution for engineering service for the county twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, uh, the Texas Department of Agriculture, uh, Texas CDVG application assistance and, and project implementation. Ms. Leah, I think you got that one.
Yes. Trying to get those out in time. Okay, this is one of, uh, I just said, if the CDVG, C-one-twenty-two, one of those, we're hoping they get a chance at. We received the medals from Goodwin Lassiter, KFA, LJATLC. And then we received one from Arseno Wilson and Co., but it was received after the, after the due date. So it was disqualified. Um, it actually was stamped the day after afternoon. They didn't, they FedEx it, but they didn't get here in time. So it's disqualified. Um, our scoring committee or review team was Ginger, Mike Lewis, myself, Sherry, and Judge. Um, we scored the submitter's rankings, number one with LJA with an average score of ninety. KFA was number two with an average score of eighty-eight point six. Um, GLS, well, Goodwin Lassiter was three with eighty point seven and TLC was last with eighty point six. So the review, uh, committee suggests, uh, recommends LJA to be awarded the contract.
Who is, who is that?
They're out of Beaumont, okay, Beaumont, Judge, LJA.
Uh, thanks, oh, yeah.
And this is the grant that, you know, it's a, it's out there every year, is it TDX? Yes, through TDX, but it's only awarded every other year. Oh, this one, you know, we were awarded for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty. And then, so the twenty-one grant, we don't know if we'll get it on.
So the committee recommends, uh, LJA?
Yes, sir.
The market?
Based on the, the scoring.
Who has it now?
Uh, nobody's.
No one?
No, sorry. This is a new grant that was, it's all. Uh, Trail and Associates is actually administering the grant. They've done, are they gonna be doing the authorization?
Okay, I hear a motion?
I make that motion. I second. Do we, we accept, uh, the review committee proposal?
Motion been made by Mr. Farmby and, uh, second by Mr. Thompson, that we, uh, approve the selection, uh, review committee's, uh, recommendation to LJA, uh, for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Texas Department of Agriculture Application Assistance and Implementation. Uh, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Five-o. Uh, number thirteen, discuss and consider approving the recommendation for the bid selection review committee to award appraisal service for GLO, CDVG, uh, Contract twenty-six-six dash oh-fifteen dash C-one-oh-eight.
And that's under, uh, the Harvey Buyout Program. And we received just one submitter. Um, Mark and I talked about it a couple weeks ago, that we need to do more and they may have to rebid, I don't know. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna run that by GLO because they normally, when you only receive one, um, they want to, to reach out again and expand even though, you know, getting title services. But anyway, I, I meant appraisers. We received one from Jordan Services out of Lufkin. Um, so, uh, and we probably need to, um, recommend to table it so we get with GLO. And then we'll bring it back to court.
Okay. I, I make that recommendation that we table the, uh, proven consideration, consideration for, recommendation for the bid selection for GLO twenty-twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, Texas Department of Agriculture.
I second.
Okay, I think you got confused with number twelve and number thirteen. This is gonna be for this, uh, GLO, uh, contract.
For the contract for twenty, twenty-sixteen, number thirteen?
Number thirteen.
Okay. I, I make that recommendation that we table the discussion and, uh, of the consideration for, uh, uh, of the bid selection review, uh, recommendation on GLO's, uh, grant for CDG, uh, CDVG Contract number twenty dash zero-six-six dash zero-fifteen dash C-one-oh-eight.
All right, and I still second?
I do.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, that we table that?
Thank you.
And, uh, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Five-o. And, uh, number fourteen is, uh, is to rebid?
Yes, sir, this is under the same contract for the Harvey Buyouts and this is for Title Company Services. And we did not receive any, uh, bids on this one. So we're gonna have to regroup and we're gonna have to rebid and we'll. So we're gonna have to regroup and we're gonna have to rebid, and we'll do the same thing, we'll get with GLO for suggestions on what to do. Um.
So you suggesting table that also?
Um, you can, you can actually, um, go ahead and approve to, to rebid, and then we'll, we can go ahead and get started on that one, but the other one we're gonna have to get with GLO. This one we can go ahead and approve to, to, uh.
That's not what you said, you said you'd have to get with GLO.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, okay, that's, that's the reason I asked you to, okay.
We suggest that, uh, the committee suggests that we rebid the Title Company Services first.
Okay.
Sorry.
Hear your motion?
So move. There.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. Fuller that we, uh, approve recommendation for the bid selection review committee to rebid for the Title Company Service for GLO CDVG Contract Twenty dash O six six dash O one five dash C one O eight. Any discussion?
Uh, I would recommend that, that whoever is selected for this, they, they're aware that they work for Newton County, not someone else.
So you.
What I'm saying is, in the past, we had some that thought that they worked for another individual.
We, we, we would wait till that time come, but right now, we're just, uh, we're on for the rebid. And then once we get the bids, then we can, uh, say that we reject ones out of the county at that point. But, uh, as, as this motion, as it's, as it's stated in our agenda, it says to rebid for, it don't specify who.
Well, uh. We didn't receive any bids on that.
We haven't received any bid.
Yes.
Are we taking a vote on it, and, uh, all, all four? You for it, Mr.?
Yes.
Five oh. Okay, number fifteen, approved a donation for a thousand dollars from JD Timber and Land LLC to Precinct Two for road damages caused by logging. And Mr. White, you wanna expel on that any?
Yeah, uh, JD, uh, the representative from JD Timber and Land, uh, uh, Management Group, they, uh, well, they realized that they had, uh, gutted the road, and, and, uh, I had a conversation with him about how much it took to re, to reconstruct the road and whatnot, and so he volunteered and, uh, sent, sent us a check for a thousand dollars to help on the cost of reconstruction.
Okay.
You gonna use that whole thousand dollars?
No. I wanted to carry over my budget to next.
Okay.
Bothered by three loads.
You wanna make that another motion?
Yeah, I make the motion that we, that we approve the donation, uh, from the JD Timber Company.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Thompson that we approve the donation of a thousand dollars from JD Timber and Land LLC to Precinct Two for his use only, I guess, for the, uh, damage from logging. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Number sixteen, uh, is discuss and approve, uh, paying end of year comp time from, uh, Mr. Billy Rose Department.
Judge, I appreciate the court taking time to, to listen to this. Uh, comp time for a sheriff is a, is a nightmare, trying to control, uh, trying to control the number of hours people have to do the, the job. And, well, I'd like to try to, in the past, we have, y'all have bought, paid for the comp time, uh, for you start off the new year with zero. And for the new sheriff coming in, I, again, I'd like to approach you about buying the comp time to where the new sheriff coming in will, will start off with a zero. Comp time is so, so hard to control, uh, for free deputies. I'd just thank for him to come in with, with comp time on the books, so it would be a, an asset to his operations to start the new office. And I think, uh, Cherry has got the numbers, uh.
Okay, I hope it adds for the eighty hours, not the C eighty hours per the county handbook. So that still doesn't end a little bit of comp time on the books, but that's gonna be for this back, and seven. And I'm hoping to add five hundred and thirteen, hey, I've got five hundred and thirteen comp hours, which would be ten thousand, one hundred twenty-one, eighty-five. And we get.
How many comp hours?
Five hundred and thirteen. And now that's not, uh, the way to add, because you're gonna have a few deputies who are still in the house.
Well, it's always good to have a couple hours for Cherry to reserve.
Just remind everybody, who approves the comp time?
You do.
But if they work, if it typically works, then.
It's automatically approved.
Uh, of course, FSLA comes into play on ours also, so, uh, with federal standards, it just, it's just really hard to control, like the guy can't even wash their car without being, uh, on time. If they wash their car at the house, that's an hour comp time. The guy doesn't do it, I don't know how to do that one, but, uh, they can't volunteer any county service at all.
And I want to be there, especially when it's in the morning.
Yeah, during the morning. We keep a close eye on it, but, you know, if, if you get off at four o'clock and you get a call at four thirty, next thing you know, it's six or seven o'clock, and you've got a couple hours, thank you.
I would just really want them to have this control. I know we overpaying this deal.
So the total amount of, of the comp, comp time only?
My comp time payout is gonna be ten thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-five cents.
Okay.
How many hours is that gonna leave? It's gonna be on the books.
I'm gonna have to go back and revisit that, I have it on my desk. But it's not gonna be a terrible whole lot, now, there's gonna be some that are gonna be leaving, that we're gonna have to pay out after the first of the year, when the new sheriff takes over, we'll have to pay out the debt.
Uh, yeah, we're not paying those right now?
No, because that's holiday, they have a holiday, vacations, and some.
Oh, that's, that's something they gotta have, care, accrue.
We get any, any holidays, yes, we include holidays and, or vacations, but it's.
So they're gonna accrue this time after this, we don't owe them right now.
If they, if they leave, we don't owe them right now. It just depends on if they leave or not, that's what they'll pay off, that's what they'll. Other, yeah, and then there's gonna be some that we still have because they have more than eighty hours built up in comp time, and I only included eighty hours per the county handbook. It does not exceed eighty hours.
So I assume then if, if you end up with more than eighty hours, we have to pay them at that time?
Yes, sir, they'll have to be paid off in full when they leave. And I think there's already three that's gonna be leaving that we will have to.
I've been informed there's three that's not gonna leave.
So we have to look at that and, and the kind of, we need. Why don't I have my question, because that won't be before conditions court.
I assume.
That one's gonna go out a lot, but.
No, that would be after we. Yeah.
We got that covered in the old legend, or we're gonna have to make a, a random?
I'm, I'm thinking of it, because we'll be able to, we'll look at that, yeah, we should be good. We should be good.
Okay.
Okay? Any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay, hear the motion?
So move.
Okay.
I'm gonna let Mr. Thompson have that one.
There you go.
If that's okay with you, Bill?
That's fine, I mean. Yes.
Uh, okay, motion been made by Mr. Thompson, second by Mr. White, that will approve, approve the pay in year comp time for Mr., uh, Billy Rose Department. Uh, any questions? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Okay, number seventeen, discussing appropriate approve non-pay Deputy Constable Holton Bubba Johnson, Jr. for Precinct Three, and, uh, Mr. White?
Yes, I, I think I'm honestly, uh, Deputy Constable. I've come first year, uh, I don't understand the problem, so I was, ready for y'all. See, that'd be something.
Do we normally pay a Deputy Constable?
No, Deputy Constables aren't paid.
Right.
They're, they're volunteered.
So.
It, it wouldn't cost you all anything.
Okay.
So he, he's constable to the first day of the year, right?
Okay.
He is constable to, to the first day of the year.
Yes.
And, and you're, you're saying effective January first?
January first, he didn't want to stay on as a Deputy Constable.
A non-paid Deputy Constable. Yeah, I, I, okay, I can read it right now. Why, why?
He was asking why?
Why is wanting to stay on? Uh, I think he enjoys working with his kids, his schools. Still useful, still have a purpose.
You hear, Mr. Farmby?
Oh, I'm, I'm confused, I'm confused, a man didn't run for the job, now he wants to stay on for nothing?
Yeah, I, I think he wants to stay involved in some form or another.
Uh, he, he, Mr. White was saying that, uh, he just wants to stay involved.
Shouldn't that fall on the sheriff's office?
No, because this is, he, he's saying for non-paid Deputy Constable, and that is elected officers don't come under jurisdiction of the sheriff.
Okay.
It would come under direct orders from, uh, Mr. White.
We do have some non-paid Deputy Constable in the county anyway.
I don't know, I'm, I'm sure there has been others.
I know there has been, now, I don't know where they are at this time, but. Yeah.
I, I think the question would be, uh, from a voter's standpoint, that they, they elected you to fill that position? And, uh, then they never see you, and they see Bubba doing your job, so the question, why did you run to start with? That, I'm just talking from the concerned citizen voters would ask that question, because we, we've had this.
They'll be saying me, I guarantee you that.
So, so I, I just brought up the point. I hear a motion, or any more question?
Yes, I'm trying to get y'all.
Would you like to have him as a reserve?
I, I don't see where it poses a problem, yes.
I'll make the move.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller, and I'm gonna give a second to Mr. White, that, uh, approve the non-pay Deputy Constable Holton Bubba Johnson, Jr. for Precinct Three, uh, Constable. Uh, so any more discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Number eighteen, discuss and approve, uh, Precinct Three, uh, Commissioner elect Danny Benson's appointment for John Height to the Health District Board, Jan, uh, starting January first, twenty twenty-one. And, uh, what, what this is consists of is the Jasper Newton Health Board, uh, bylaws say that each commissioner from Jasper or Newton, and, uh, it's Newton's time, that ever elected commissioner will get his appointment, uh, when he's elected. And then, uh, it's alternate, it's the next two years, the other two commissioners has that op, same opportunity, plus the judge. So, uh, this is what we're doing, we're replacing a couple that, uh, has been on there quite some time. And, uh, Mr. Benson has, uh, elected to appoint, uh, John Height, uh, to that board.
Okay, did I understand you say Precinct One or Precinct Three?
I said three.
It'd be Precinct One and Precinct Three.
And Precinct Three.
Well, Precinct Three will have his own appointment.
Right.
But, uh, we're just gonna, uh, approve Mr. Danny Benson, elect, uh, Danny Benson.
Okay.
Because he will.
I thought you read number three instead of number one.
Correct, number one.
I thought, just.
Got number one on eighteen.
Okay.
I make that motion.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller and second by Mr. Thompson that we approve Precinct One, uh, elected Danny Benson, appointment of John Height to Jasper Newton Health Board District, uh, starting January first, twenty twenty-one. Any discussion? Not all in favor? You okay with it, Mr. Farmby?
Yeah, I.
Five oh. Number nineteen, discussing approve Precinct Three, Commissioner Gary Farmby appointment of Geraldine Rowe to the Jasper Newton Health District Board beginning January first, twenty twenty-one. And, uh, same, same goes there, but, uh, Mr. Farmby had to run, so he'll take a new position or is re-elect a position in January, and, uh, so he gets that appointment. And, uh, and they'll serve a full year term, just like the commissioner will. Hear a motion?
I make the motion, we approve, uh, Precinct Three, here from the format, here in the mall. Jasper Newton Health Board.
Okay, second?
Second.
Uh, it's been approved, it's, uh, motion been approved to Precinct Three, Commissioner Gary Farmby appoint Geraldine Rowe to the Jasper Newton Health, uh, District Board, beginning in January one, twenty twenty-one. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Number twenty is, uh, recognition and presentation to present the bill, uh, flag to Bill Fuller in honor of his services, and that's gonna be presented by Ms. Lanny Brown.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. It is, uh, my distinct privilege and honor to be here on behalf of Congressman Babin to present Commissioner Fuller with a flag from the United States Capitol in your honor.
Let me, I'll lift you.
I'd like to read the, um, certificate if you'd mind. Certificate of Special Congressional Recognition, the company's flag was flown over the United States Capitol in honor of William Phil Fuller, Commissioner Precinct One, presented on the fourteenth day of December, twenty twenty. Thank you on behalf of the people of the thirty-sixth congressional district for your dedicated service to the residents of Newton County in southeast Texas, enjoy your retirement, Brian Babin, members of.
Thank you. Okay, at the same time, uh, I would like to present, uh, Mr. Bill Fuller for a plaque from the Newton County. Bill, I want to appreciate, tell you how the court appreciates. Bill, I want to appreciate, tell you how the court appreciates your services and the long time dedication to citizens in Newton County. And, uh, we appreciate everything you've done and, and honoring you for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ford.
Way to go, Bill Fuller.
And at the same time, I'd like to present, uh, Mr. Billy Rose Senior with a, a plaque also.
All right.
The short length of time that you've been here, uh, I wanna kick your butt because you're leaving. We appreciate that way to go.
Hey, I, I, I'm not gonna beat like Bill. I've got something I got to say. Uh, how many sheriffs are safe here? But I wanna look every one of you in the eye and I can't see you two, but I know you're out there somewhere. Uh, how much I appreciate y'all working with the sheriff's office. Uh, I, I can tell you, I've never had a battle with a municipal corps. And that's a lot to say coming from a, from a sheriff in the county. And I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate it and why, what kind of author I have in my, my whole four years and your being the twenty-five from visiting the county back also. And I'm proud of you and people who mount the people's station, you know. Thank you so much for all you did. And over being, Lord, what can we say about over? Everybody here knows what an asset he is to this county. He was that same to the, to the sheriff's office and I thank you. And the ladies that signed the check. What can I say about all of our citizens and people? Uh, I just can't tell you what kind of great elected officials we have in Newton County. I made a, I talked to the judge last week about a certain thing that may be coming up. We may need a little bit of help and, and I told him, uh, my phone number won't change and I'll be glad to be anything I can for Newton County. And I appreciate y'all every bit of, thank you.
Good luck, Bill.
And y'all know how blessed we are with, with Lanny, Donald Reed, and Brian Babbitt, who he is. In Newton County, just because of Lanny. I love our Congressmen and I love Lanny and thank you for everything you and the Congressmen do for me. Thank you. And the same thing, Dave White, the sheriff of Michigan, wow, how blessed we are to have a, a state representative, my friend, Dave White.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we come to the point to, uh, where we pay the bills and Ms. Sheriff?
General fund, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-sixty-two. District of County State Fund, two thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and nine hundred and three cents. Road and Ridge General, twenty-five thousand, eight eleven, eleven cents. Road and Ridge Precinct One, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Road and Ridge Precinct Two, nineteen thousand, three eleven, eighty-one. Road and Ridge Precinct Three, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-five cents. Road and Ridge Precinct Four, twenty thousand, six forty-five, forty-four. Courthouse Security, five hundred and ten dollars and eighty-four cents. VAW Grant, five thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and eight cents. Ridesway, five thousand dollars. Commissioner Special Precinct One, forty thousand, fifty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Commissioner Special Precinct Two, twenty-four thousand, one oh six seventy-eight. Commissioner Special Precinct Three, eleven thousand, thirty-two dollars and seven cents. Commissioner Special Precinct Four, sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-four oh nine. Dedicated Road Precinct One, four thousand, sixty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. Dedicated Road Precinct Four, sixty thousand dollars. Record preservation, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. Solid waste disposal, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and forty-six cents. Voger registration, five thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars, six hundred and forty, fifty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. Newton County Library, twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four and ninety-eight cents. Historical operation, three thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and ninety-three cents. Hazard mitigation grant, four hundred and three thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars. FEMA grant, ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-five. Grant, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and one hundred and seventeen dollars and eight cents. And technology fund, three hundred dollars and eleven cents. For a total of two, two, eight thirty-five, fifty-four.
Okay, any? Any question? Uh, I hear a motion to pay the bill?
Make the motion, we pay the bill.
You a second?
Thank you.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Thompson that we, uh, pay the monthly bills. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Uh, I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Same here.
Maybe by Mr. Fuller and second by Mr. Thompson, uh, and we adjourn. Twenty minutes after ten. About eleven. Sorry. All in favor?
Ah.